Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, May 6th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. We are here at the Rutland Library. This meeting is being videotaped by cable for showing on the cable station as well as on YouTube later. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could I get a motion to sign Treasury Ward 23 and Payroll?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. I'll just show that pen.
Pass that down. Moving right along, we have a giant crowd tonight. Is there anyone here for public comment?
No.
Come on, Mr. Williams.
Dick Williams, over.
The one thing I would like to bring up tonight, and Towne Holden is having a public hearing Wednesday night at the Senior Center, and I would like all of you to go. Wouldn't that be awesome? It's about the roadway, but I would like the Town of Rutland, or somebody to go anyways. I'm gonna try to make it myself, but from the town to kind of, let's start pushing this bypass. It takes 20 years. I was always told, Central Mass and when I met with DOT, that it was, it's 20 years from the time they started designing before the first car rolls down the road. And 20 years ago that I put the ad in the Landmark, please, you know, do this and push it. Time has come, and if you want this town to grow, do you want this town to have people that love to drive to work and not stand in line down and holding on the road? I think it'd be a wonderful idea to go, at least go down there and make a comment. You know, I know they're not gonna probably want to hear it, but, and it would be even better if we could get like a town administrator from Hubbardston, or somebody from Berry and Ocam to also, you know, participate and go down there. I think it would, you know, maybe, I was hoping maybe widen the eyes a little bit of the people down there in Holden.
I think they'll throw fruit at us, is what I think.
Well, there's probably no doubt about it, but where do you begin? Where do you begin?
Okay.
So, that is my only thing that I'm gonna bring up tonight, and...
What's the date and time? It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, I believe, at 7:00. Yeah, like I said, the Senior House down there.
Senior Center on Main Street. All right.
All right, thank you.
Sean, you just walked in. Are you here for public comment?
I don't know, as we go, maybe.
Nope, this is your shot.
Not right now, I wanna know what's going on first.
Not right now, all right. Town Administrator updates?
So, in terms of budget updates, we have a balanced budget, 24.1 million. You'll see that when we go through the warrant review. General updates, on Saturday, the Police K-9 Association had a very successful five K-9. They raised just about $5,000 from the event. And it's tons of dogs, tons of people, it's a good time overall. Thank you to Officer Fornuccio for keeping me company during the entire way. We were kinda like playing leapfrog with each other, going, it was fun. The Treasurer's Office is holding a benefit fair for all town employee and retirees who are benefit eligible. That'll take place on May 8th, from 10 to 4:00 PM, in the large meeting room of the library. There'll be a raffle and a door prize if you go, and there'll be different insurance-type companies, Aflac on top of our health insurance that we're going through and things like that, so that you could sign up for different types of things there. The Mass Municipal Association is holding a best practice seminar with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and that will take place in a couple weeks, if not next week, I think it's the week after. I will be going to that, it is free to attend, so that way the town is at least represented there. The Green Communities, people that we have been working with at CMRPC got ahold of us saying that they knew that we had taken a portion of our grant to fund CMRPC's help with it, and then last week, the state released a grant to hire professional help to help you with your Green Communities grant, so you don't have to take that administrative side out. So, we are applying for that, and if we get it, that'll just increase what we have on the grant side of it, rather than the administrative side of that, and Laura is taking the point on that one, just like she did for the rest of the Green Communities there.
Excellent.
My last thing, just because it's always fun to end with the party planning side of things, is we have our food truck festival coming up. This is a first for the Town of Rutland, and it's gonna take place on Memorial Field on Saturday, July 27th, from 12:00 noon to 5:00 PM. We'll have about 15 trucks there. We've got 13 already confirmed, so we'll at least have 13, we'll probably have 15 if I'm right. Should be a fun time. The Fire Brigade has agreed to donate tables and chairs and a tent for the event, so we're working with the Worcester Food Truck Association, who is the organization that's putting it on, to see what the logistics will be for that event, and as they get up closer and get developed, we'll have an event on Facebook for it, on the town's Facebook page, it'll be on the town's website, and should be a fun time. And that is all I have for Town Administrator updates this evening.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
We're gonna move right along. So, under new business, we have a street sign request. Do you have it in your new business folder? Irish and Emerald onto Turkey Hill. Mr. Buckley, you recommended it.
Yeah.
Come on down.
Yeah. And then get to see what the recent fire etc.
They say everybody recommended it, but you're here.
Yes. They're country roads, and there's a lot of, multiple streets coming into one location, so we didn't, what the rest of them were saying was they should be better designation, like a stop sign, and based on location, we didn't advise that, we just posted a couple dangerous intersection signs.
Okay.
Make people aware.
Okay, and police fire are aware of what you recommended?
Yes.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve the street sign request for Trail as presented.
Second? Second. Any discussion?
Oh, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Mike, is there an original? Or...
Right here. Do we send that down for signature?
Next, the Girl Scout Silver Award.
We have six, I believe, yes, six Rutland Girl Scouts who received the Girl Scout Silver Award, which is one of the highest achievements that a Girl Scout can receive, and they are being honored at a ceremony at Mechanics Hall in Worcester on June 20th. So, we, the Girl Scouts Organization for Worcester County has asked that we send letters of recognition, recognition to these Girl Scouts congratulating them for their achievement of this award. They are Leah Bunton, Emily Benoit, Sarah McManon, Sarah Mata, Julianne Becker, and Paige DeCasey, all from Rutland. So, it's kinda neat when you see that many names highlighted on this sheet from Rutland being honored in such a way. So, we'll be looking for approval to send a letter on behalf of the board to congratulate them for achieving this. It's similar to an Eagle Scout rank on the Boy Scout side. It's not their gold award yet, but it's still really prestigious and high on the Girl Scout side.
So, question?
Yes.
You'll be attending?
Yes.
Were you looking for as many from the board to attend?
As many, it's, as many, if you'd like to go, you're welcome to, it's $10 a person, so we have that in the budget under purchase services anyway.
And can we also maybe do an invite for one of their proclamation certificates or something like that, back before the board, in front of the camera?
Yeah, we can do that.
Can we put that in the letter?
You'll just...
Yeah, we'll just put in a letter, "Come to the board meeting on this date," and we'll present you with an award or something like that.
Or we're presenting after we do that, or...
Maybe put it off and pick a date in September?
Okay.
Because this event is right at the end of school.
And then do it when school gets back in session.
Yeah, I mean, who knows how many of them are away for different vacation weeks and things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right. That's great. Moses Howe Day. Oh, wait, do you need a motion or anything for that, Mike, or just...
Sure.
Sure, let's take it.
I don't know. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, just to authorize the Town Administrator to send a letter of congratulations to the Girl Scouts listed on the paper.
On behalf of the board?
On behalf of the board.
Make a motion that we authorize...
So moved.
Yeah, so moved.
So moved. Thank you. We'll have a second.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Now, we can go on to Moses Howe Day.
Can I have that pamphlet, Mike?
Yeah.
You got somebody out in the office.
Hi.
Is there a public comment yet?
There has, but let me do the two new business things, and I'll circle back before we go to old. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Huh? You got that back down there?
No, no, the pamphlet, I presented there as the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Moses Howe Day. So, before we get to the proclamation requests, Wednesday, May 15th, is National Peace Officer Memorial Day nationwide. It's a holiday that had been declared 1962 by President Kennedy, recognizing Peace Officer Memorial Day to pay special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. In honor of this holiday, we are, I, we, are requesting that, first of all, the town recognize National Peace Officer Memorial Day through the proclamation before you, accepting the national holiday as our own, and as part of that, as part of that process, we wanted to do a reef-laying ceremony. It's tradition in law enforcement to lay a blue reef, and the laying of that reef will symbolize a commitment to remember and honor the sacrifices of our nation's law enforcement. It's presented as a symbol of respect and appreciation upon the resting places. And throughout the other process that we had been working with the Scouts, the perambulation, which is the witnessing of the town cornerstone, and the history that goes with that, we identified an individual in town, Moses Howe, who was a founding father in 1722, and the documents reflect that not only was he a selectman, and therefore possibly a perambulator, he also served many roles as Town Assessor, the Treasurer, an officer in the militia, remember 1722, this was pre-America, a Justice of the Peace, and a Constable. We, the town was served by constables up until 1934, when the Rutland Police Department was actually formed. So, throughout the process of the perambulation, we were able to identify who was most likely Rutland's first law enforcement officer. So, Moses Howe Day is an opportunity to coincide with National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and to pay respect to the Rutland Police Department, to our nation's law enforcement, and to take it to the next level specifically with Sir Moses Howe, who we recognized. So, what we would like to do, at 5:00 on the 15th, it's a Wednesday afternoon, his resting site is at the crest of the old burial ground, directly next to the old fire barn in there. If you walk through the white pillars that take you into the burial ground, he's probably 20, less than 20 yards in there with his, with his family in there. So, what I do propose is about a 40-minute ceremony. It's going to be in unison with the Board of Selectmen, the Rutland Police Department, Police Chief, the Rutland Historical Society, and the Boy and Girl Scouts, who have been involved in the perambulation. So, we'd like a presentation of the colors by the Wolf Pack, the raising of the flag at the old fire barn, and we had already met with the Fire Brigade to get their endorsement of this, and the use of probably the old fire barn in the ceremony here. We'd like some remarks from myself, Representative of the Board of Selectmen, the Police Chief, and the Historical Society would like to give some remarks. There's three proclamations before you that Mike graciously wrote up there. One of them is to declare, recognize the day in respect to the Rutland Police Department, and also mentions, there's three firsts in this process. The first Constable, first law enforcement officer, but we also want to recognize the first full-time police officer, that's another milestone, and that is Francis Glynn, who was Rutland's first full-timer in 1985, and he's retiring this year after 34 years of service. So, a second proclamation, recognize in that first. And last but not least, is the recognition of the town's first full-time Police Chief, and that's Ralph Anderson, who served over 40 years of service to the town, 15 years as Police Chief, three years as the full-time Police Chief, and he's celebrating on June 3rd his 80th birthday. So, I respectfully present a proclamation for the board's approval to present all three at the same time at the service of the Moses Howe Memorial. We'll be looking for representatives to present, like somebody from the board, perhaps the Chair, to at least participate in one. Like to also have the Historical Society participating. We also have a special guest who I'm meeting with tomorrow, I don't want to, I just want to put that out there as a teaser, to give the historical aspect of the old burial ground. So, we'd have a presentation of a special guest. Then we would do the laying of the wreath, which would be the Selectmen, the Police Department, Historical Society, some bagpipes on behalf of the Police Department, for the Rutland Police salute, and then a closing benediction by the Chaplain of the Fire Brigade, which is Brian Stitzen, also a former law enforcement officer. I estimate it to be about 45 minutes. The cable commission has been advised, they're going, they're going to record it in there. Mike, I've asked that you maybe just at least notify the Worcester news media if they were interested, and I spoke to Mrs. Roy from the Landmark, and they would most definitely be covering that. So, that is more of the Historical Society aspect of this perambulation project. Back to the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts aspect of it, that'll be finalized on June 2nd, which I will talk about at the next meeting as we get a little bit closer. That'll be the close of that, and the laying of a time capsule, more of that to follow. So...
Through the Chair. Why are we honoring doing all three of these proclamations? I, I can see the Chief Police, the former Chief, this first full-time Police Officer? First, what are we talking about? The guy, we trained him, we put him on, we spent our money to get him full-time and get him educated, and he up and leaves us and goes to West Boylston. He's retiring from West Boylston, let them, let them make a big deal out of it. We, I don't see why we should. I'm sorry, I just can't, I just have a problem with this.
I respectfully disagree. I think you can always, you can always say thank you, you can always, you can always recognize people for the contribution that they make, is no expense to the town, it is recognizing the first, the contribution of the firsts in there, being the first law enforcement officer, 1722. The movement from a part-time agency to full-time.
I don't have any problem with that. I'm talking about the one officer that was, you know, the first full-time officer. No, we paid for that guy to be educated, and then he up and leaves us. If you said, you know, an officer that's still on the force, has been on there for umpteen years, that'd be different. But no, this, this guy up and left the town, and, you know, we had to hire somebody else and retrain somebody else.
Noted. Maybe perhaps we could vote on them individually, if that's how you...
No, he was, he was still the first, though. He's still the first.
I don't care if he was, it's pretty much, he left.
Recognized the first.
He left the town.
I get your point, but I agree that if he was the first, he should be recognized.
Yeah, well, I disagree.
Okay, well, we're gonna do them individually, then. Can we, and we are not gonna read them in full and ruin the surprise on the actual event, so all of the whereas's, and then the be it further proclaimed, we're not going to read out, but we have them, if anybody wants to read them later, and then they'll be presented in full and read in full at the event. So, can I take a motion for the proclamation to declare May 12th through 18th as Police Week, May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and saluting Constable Moses Howe? So, that's the proclamation.
I make that motion as rec...
I'll second it.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so this one we can sign. Next, I'll take a motion to, this is a resolution, again, we're not gonna read these out today, we're gonna save those for the special event, to recognize Ralph Anderson as Rutland's first full-time Police Chief.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, another one we can sign. Okay, and the last one, this is that resolution to recognize Rutland's first full-time officer, and again, as was noted, June 1934, the Police Department was established, it was part-time until 85, and he was appointed as our first full-time officer at that time. And he's been 34 years in total, a majority of which I think were in the community of West Boylston, our neighboring community, where he's about to retire this year, right? 2019?
He's a resident, he's also a resident.
And he continues to be a resident of Rutland, okay. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments? We've heard a little bit.
Well, take the vote, 'cause I'm gonna oppose.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one opposed?
You gotta ask it.
All opposed?
Me, my, me, myself, and I.
So, that vote is four to one. I'm gonna pass that one down, and that is approved. Thank you very much. That sounds like a really nice event.
I, I welcome everybody to attend. It's streaming on the cable channel, the event, we're working on a pamphlet in here with just some historical information on the back. I welcome, I fully welcome the board's participation in the event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we did our citation approval, unless there's another citation I didn't know about?
No.
Okay, and we're going to circle back, somebody came in a little bit late in public comment, came up really fast, so we've got a couple people join us. Is there anyone else here for a back-to-public comment?
Sorry?
That's you, come on up.
I was waiting to be asked to come up, I don't wanna see a pushy, not likely.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
How was your trip?
Fabulous.
Good?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to...
Name and address.
Louis J. Carniculi, 18 Blueberry Lane, Rutland, Massachusetts. First, I would like to congratulate Skip and wish him best of luck, I understand you're not running, and welcome to the fraternity of retired Select people. We meet never, but in case we do, you will be invited. But congratulations and thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your service. Thank you very much. I'm here to ask a question as to, I understand that on the upcoming annual town meeting, there is a bylaw change, proposal, and it would limit the amount of new homes being built in our town somewhere in the 30s. I don't know exactly what the number is. So, I have a two-part question, and there may be some follow-up to it, and maybe a statement to close. Number one, why is there a need for this bylaw proposal?
A lot of that was, through the Chair? A lot of that was covered at the hearings leading up to...
I was in Florida, Mr. Selectman, for five months, so I wasn't able to attend the hearings.
Okay. Well, this isn't the hearing, so...
Okay, you don't wanna answer it, that's fine.
Well, I think, so are you looking for a very large framework of how this came about relative to where we started back in '02, '03, and how we got to this point? There are things you could watch from Florida, I think maybe we need to make a better effort at reaching out to the people that aren't here year-round.
Well, it's difficult to get local Rutland TV stations down in Florida.
No, it's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, so we need to...
I just know that now.
Yeah, so we need to...
Next year when I'm there, I'll make sure I go to YouTube, in case you're doing anything else that I might be interested in.
Definitely.
Okay, so that's neither hitherto did, okay? What was the, was it unanimous vote to have this?
So, it was a unanimous vote of Board of Selectmen, and there was a joint meeting with the Planning Board to pursue this for this annual town meeting that night.
But I hear they're unfavorable in...
They're voting, they voted at their last meeting...
Unfavorable.
3-2 to not recommend it on the meeting floor, but they are presenting it that night.
Well, as many of you know, for nine years I was a selectman, so I have a little bit of understanding of how, how we work, okay? And at the time, we didn't have a Town Administrator, so we did all of the heavy lifting ourselves, okay? And I just think that this is so un-American and so un-Rutland, this kind of a growth control, putting stipulations. If in 1973, there was a bylaw like this, and my wife and I, and our two little kids, the third child didn't come till we moved to Rutland, were the 38th house to apply, we would not have been able to come to Rutland. Now, I know there's probably a lot of people that wish I never showed up to Rutland, but you can't say that about my wife, and you can't say that about my children. My wife loves this community. My children had the greatest upbringing of any three kids that I ever known, and all of their friends that lived in our neighborhood and went to Naquad, 'cause we only had Naquad back then, had the most incredible upbringing that they could ever have. But that would have been denied if we were applicant number 38, and couldn't wait a year to try again and went and built somewhere else. Not to say we wouldn't have a great existence somewhere else. My wife is gonna leave this town two ways, one through Miles, or one through a nursing home. She loves Rutland so much. She loves Rutland so much. During my time as a selectman, we had control over problems. During my time as a selectman, we passed a moratorium, because we believed it was necessary to control what was happening to our water and our sewerage, until we were able to straighten the thing out. We were brought to court by a builder who no longer exists in this community, he has gotten out of the building business, and we prevailed. Paul Cranston did a terrific job for us. We prevailed, we prevailed. We have all different types of boards that deal with wetlands, that deal with sewerage, that deal with all kinds of stuff. We have everything in place, so that if this town gets in trouble with building, we can put a stop to it. Maybe a stop that may last for years, but we have control over this. I think to limit growth, my personal opinion, is so un-American that we are going to deny people who are scraping money together to move out, maybe, let's get out to the country, I don't wanna live in the city anymore, I heard Rutland's a great community. You talk to anybody, and believe me, I get around a lot, my jobs that I had after I left teaching, and when I tell people I'm from Rutland, they say, many of them say to me, oh, that great little community north of Worcester, I heard so many good things, you have a phenomenal Fourth of July parade, you do things on Memorial Day. It's a wonderful, wonderful community where you reach out to people. People wanna come here, but this bylaw is gonna deny it, and you can't tell me that it's necessary to control growth when you already have things in place that when the town gets in trouble, that it, you can take care of these things. History proves it. During my time, as I said earlier, that took place. We were able to protect the water and protect the sewer lines until we could figure out what we needed to do, we did it, and building continued again. I really wish that you, I know you, I'm gonna ask you, I know what the answer's gonna be, but I would really wish that you would reconsider, and when you get to the town floor, remain the Rutland that I love, remain the Rutland that I believe in, remain the Rutland that is real America, real America, and all you have to do is come to any of our events, you're gonna love Fourth of July.
I can't wait.
I could have a free trip to the Vatican to meet the Pope in person, and tell them I'll be there on July 8th. We never leave Rutland on July 4th weekend, the four-day celebration. And that's what this community's about, and I'm really, really disappointed that you people have voted to do this. Thank you for your time.
Did you have follow-up? Can we...
That's my follow-up. Thank you for your time, I'll see you on Saturday, and I will speak again, oppose to this draconian bylaw.
May we respond as the board while you're...
Sure, sure.
I, I found an article, you mentioned Skip, and we're gonna talk about Skip in a little while. When you retired back in 2007, the Landmark interviewed you. The first sentence was, "In your decade during which Rutland's population grew from 6,000 to 8,000 people." You listed your accomplishments, new municipal buildings, Glenwood Elementary School, which we know you were the Chair of the Building Committee, we had to build a library, a Department of Public Works, a public safety complex, and two schools renovated. After that, and you left... After that, and you left when I came on, that's how you and I are, right, overlap, and I'm on my, about to start my thirteenth year, finances went wrong very quickly. So to your point about the controls that we have had in place, the one control we don't have is to ensure that we won't see the building high points that we saw during some of your years, which we saw, is it oh-six, there were a hundred and thirty-three building permits pulled. And you're at town meeting every year, and you've seen us battle, and in many cases, you stepped up and you have strongly argued that we should be funding, for example, the schools, right? We've all had these conversations about education and how we've had a very hard time funding education, and the requests that the district have made because of our situation. You know we're at our tax levy, you're at our meetings every year, fighting to try to get us to fund the things that we haven't had the money for. I hope, I'm hoping, that you're gonna take this week prior and go through the documentation that we've accumulated from CMR PC. And if this is how you still feel, because I understand what you're saying, but the goal here is not to stop growth, it never will. The goal here is to come to a point where we know we can manage what we're getting, be able to maintain the community that you're describing, where we don't have to shut down the library, because we've talked about it, and you've been there, and where we don't have to fire police officers, and we've talked about that, and you've been there, but where we can maintain this sense of community. You know, as you know, I think when you were a board member, we used to fund Fourth of July, we had money in the levy to be able to do that. We cut that years ago, there's been no money, and it's a result of too fast residential growth. Keep in mind, too, that this is only a five-year managed growth bylaw, it is bylaw required to sunset. And at that point, if our times have changed, if the foundation formula for the schools is significantly different, and we're in a better place relative to the state, funding our education the way it's supposed to when they promised us, if we're in a better place relative to diversification of our tax base, because we're bringing in more commercial business, we're gonna be able to come to town meeting and say, you know what, we don't need this anymore. Five years, we made it through, we're in a better place, we can see that it did what it needed to do, and it will sunset and go away. Or if, worst-case scenario, we're still not there, the town could vote to extend it for five more years. It's not forever, we're not, we're not stopping growth, it's, I'd like to think it's reasonable, we've been using that word a lot. I get, I do understand you're coming from a time in the nineteen seventies when the population was, was at a different level than we are now, I get it.
Well, thank you for all of that, and I'll just end with this, okay? I will certainly be there. I can't remember anybody being laid off. I can't remember anybody being laid off.
We did it through attrition.
I can't remember anybody being laid off, okay?
Right, it was through attrition.
I can't remember anybody being laid off. I always remember coming to a settlement on all budgets, even the school budget included. Even the school budget, I think there may have been one time, maybe one time, that Rutland was forced to come forward because four of the towns, but now you've got your assistant city Paxton who's having difficulties. And so that, that doesn't happen any longer, okay, I can remember those things. I just, I've done a little research, and I'll have some facts and figures at the town meeting, and growth, sometimes, stopping growth, putting a limit on growth, backfires, and it costs you money. You lose money, you don't gain money, you lose money. And I would hope that you people have done your research, I know you're an astute person, Sheila, and I'm sure you've done it. And I'd be surprised that you didn't uncover some facts and figures that say growth control isn't the panacea that everybody thinks it's going to be. And you know as well as I do, once something is in, five years will come, hopefully I'm still here, I'll be a spry eighty-two, okay, in five years, I'll be a spry eighty-two. But once something's in, it's difficult to get rid of it. And I really hope that enough people come out, because it's a two-thirds vote if I remember on bylaws, and defeat this thing, because I just don't see it the way to go. We are not facing an emergency right now where the town is ready to lock the doors and shut the doors. And if I'm correct, we're, we are going down on our debt. We're ready to pay off, pay off some buildings, aren't we? Aren't we ready to pay off some stuff?
Yeah, it took a national recession to slow growth to the point where we could catch up.
But, but we're catching up.
Because of a recession.
And once is this, and once you put this bylaw in, it's in forever.
No, Mr. Carnicoli, it's simply not, it's legally not.
Five years, believe me, believe me, you know as well as I do, once something is in, it's very difficult to get rid of, because it'll come up again.
No, you need to reactivate it.
Anyway, we'll argue this, I don't wanna play hold of the meeting, but Skip, thanks again, we'll see you
Saturday.
On the eleventh.
Okay.
Very, very much.
Thanks.
Who's your new DPW gentleman? Is he here?
Joe Buckley.
Well, nice to meet you. Good luck. Thanks. Anything I can do, give me a call, okay?
Would anybody else like to speak in our second public comment? Can we, no? Okay. We're moving on old business.
Sean, no.
No? No, okay.
Right.
So under old business
Sean, did you, now you're tired, no?
You sure? Okay. Under old business, we have special annual town meeting warrant review and recommendations. We've had this conversation in the past, certainly the three of us to the left have had this conversation multiple times. The board has taken a position in the past that by placing warrant articles, it was a de facto approval of them. However, there are plenty of boards that will take a vote and give the community a recommendation based on a vote similar to what FinCom does. It's not something we would necessarily be reading, it would be listed within the documentation that the residents will get the night of the meeting. We have three options in front of us, we could choose not to do it, we have not done it in the past. We could choose to do it as a slate and essentially say, yes, we have two sets, we have two warrants in front of us, and in placing them, we are in approval of all of these articles. Or if there are people at the table that kinda questioned where they stand on some of them, we can take them one by one and go through and do a vote. And we won't take an enormous amount of time, we'll just read through them and go through those, those votes one by one.
Sheila, just one quick thing, the one thing that was just passed out to the board members down is you now have the motions for Saturday's town meeting in front of you as well, so that is the new document that's with you.
Well, does anyone differ from what the finance committee has before us here on the, on the different articles?
No, and in fact, in the warrants, it actually says whether they voted favorably, unfavorably, and then there's one that they voted to recommend inaction on.
So, so there's, there's one that has, you know, inaction, I think we should talk about that one, that's Article three. And Article four on the special, they voted unfavorably on the fifteen thousand dollars for the landscaping.
All others were favorable.
Everybody, everything else was favorable.
But this is less about FinCom, this is about this board. There have been certainly plenty of times where the two disagreed on more than a couple of things, and that's fine. So like I said, we can go through these one by one, we can approve as a slate, it really depends on people's feelings. If you think right now, you know for a fact that there are articles on either the annual or the special that you wouldn't necessarily be in favor of as a board, and that we would not be unanimous in supporting them, then we should do it one by one.
Hell, I can see one, that's Article four.
On the special?
On the special.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I personally think that the fact that we put them on there is good enough for me, that we place the articles.
Well, it plays with the, with the understanding, we can let the people decide.
Correct.
You know, it doesn't mean that we
I think, I think in some cases, as we're going through conversations that night, sometimes people will ask us, well, were we unanimous as a board? It's a fair question, there's five of us, I get it. So if we're unanimous, great, and if we're not, yeah. Okay, so then, it sounds to me like, do you wanna start with the special? Everyone is confident in their, in the placement of the articles, with the exception of four.
Yep.
I would take a motion to approve as a slate minus four that the board recommends taking favorable action on all special town meeting articles. And again, we're leaving four out.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so now, why don't we do Article four, we'll do a separate vote, motion either way.
Not only because we're, you know, we're fighting over fifteen thousand dollars, my belief is unfavorably on, on the landscaping. I get, I get the other argument, but because we're, we came down to the penny, literally, down to the penny. Can't support it now, so I'm, I'm on the unfavorable side on fifteen thousand for landscaping.
My issue with it is the fact that we don't know what it entails, it's just a number.
So Joe
But I think that people should, should decide.
Well, okay, that's a different argument, because we could technically move no action on this. The finance committee has recommended unfavorable, this is a special warrant article, which means we're presenting it. Joe? You have one last shot to defend this, does anybody want Joe to try to defend this one more time? So basically, you got, yeah, as you know, you've got an unfavorable recommendation from FinCom. There is technically money in spring free cash. But, you know, the feedback hasn't necessarily been all sunshine and daisies. So, we could make a motion to take no action, and they're just, it'll just get passed over, or this board will take a vote, and we'll move it on the floor and let the voters that night decide. Sorry, that's a lot, I know.
Yeah, wanna clarify that one more time, please, if we take no action?
If the, if the motion, the initial motion
Your reference to no action, does that refer to the current meeting?
That
Is that procedural move you're doing right now?
No, no.
So you're asking me questions about procedural meetings, procedural moves that you made during town meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so
No action would be
These are your two proposed procedural moves for town meeting?
Correct.
So if you could review those?
So a motion for no action will be taken very quickly, there's generally very little discussion, although there can be. And it essentially means the, the town body is not voting pro or against, it's passing over it, no action. On the other hand, we will make a motion
Effectively tables it?
Tables it.
Okay, for future discussion?
Sure, but, yes, yes.
But the people can still vote?
People can, people would vote on taking no action, meaning we, we had information that came to us after the warrant articles were set, and it means we don't wanna proceed with this vote, we don't need to have this discussion tonight, sort of. We're not ready, we're not, either we're not ready, or somebody's changed their mind, or there's new information, or whatever. There's a million different reasons why we might take no action. Okay, the other option would be
One more question on the procedural no action.
Okay.
Does someone have to make that motion?
Yes, we would make that motion.
So you would make, you would make the motion or to take no action at this time?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the second option would be us reading the motion as it stands, because we have to do something, it's in the warrant. So it's an article in the warrant, it has to be addressed, it can't, you can't just pretend it's not there. So the other motion would be, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to the Highway Administrator Purchase Services account number, et cetera, for the purpose of contracting with a landscaping service. There would be a second. There would be a finance committee recommendation, which you now know will be unfavorable. There would be, at this point, a notation by the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not they recommend it tonight. Select Board, and then discussion would follow. We have no idea how much discussion it would be, that's up to the moderator. He will, you know, entertain anybody who has questions, most likely you would be asked questions. And at some point, either the questions will stop, or someone will move the question, which means discussion is ended, and they go to a vote, and you need a simple majority on this. Win or lose?
I
No pressure.
No, I didn't pressure you, I didn't come prepared for that, I only came prepared for the sign, but that's fine.
Oh, that's okay.
Having said that, so the finance committee has ruled against it, or they believe it unfavorable?
They have recommended it as an unfavorable expenditure, they don't believe we should spend the money on that at this time. And again, the board and the finance committee historically have not always, I mean, we're going back years, Louis, the whole nine yards, Dick is nodding, have not always seen eye to eye on things, we don't always agree on how to spend this money. Obviously, we placed this article, so there was support for it at that point. Since then, I would say the one thing that's changed is how we've massaged the free cash that's available and figured out, you know, how much we needed for snow and ice, that number has become more concrete as time has gone by.
So you're asking my recommendation to, you're asking if I wanna continue to defend it?
Yes.
Yes, I think I wanna continue to defend it.
All right. Okay, so considering what we just heard from Joe, I think a motion for no action is not where we need to proceed with this. However, we still should take a vote of whether or not the board supports it.
Why do you say no action is not where we're
He would like to proceed with a vote by the body, he would like the town to vote on it, taking action on this, up or down. Is that fair?
Fair enough.
Okay.
To pursue, you're gonna have to have details. And that's what was lacking in front of the finance committee.
I mean, they were given, they were given information, they just felt like it wasn't enough.
They weren't crazy about the round number.
Yeah.
Wasn't specific enough.
An exact list of buildings, an exact list of what was going to get done, an exact number of an hourly rate, it was they were looking for some very, very specific things.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend unfavorable
Okay.
on this, in this article.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And I'll say aye, so three to two, the board's recommending unfavorable, and we're gonna move forward. And you will get to defend it on the floor. Good way to start the night, fun times, okay. Next, the annual town meeting. So twenty-seven total articles. Is that right?
Yes.
Where'd they go? Our twenty-six and twenty-seven just didn't think, they didn't make it?
Yes, both, yeah, twenty-six is appropriating five hundred dollars into the ag coms
Yeah.
thing, and then twenty-seven is allowing the moderator to appoint the finance committee.
So I think we're gonna have the same question, if there is anyone that no longer feels that they support an article that was placed by the board on the warrant, we're gonna go through these either individually or in small groups. Otherwise, we will take the vote as the slate.
Motion to, uh, take, would you say, take the vote?
So basically, we're, it's essentially like
Motion to do the slate, as you just said.
Okay.
Accept them all as a slate.
I'd like to pull two of them though myself.
Which ones?
Twenty-six. That's not on here.
Twenty-six, if you have the
So twenty-six funding ag.
Five hundred dollars out of free cash.
Okay, and?
And Article three.
Okay, so
I mean, let's be real, I mean, this is I have a problem with it. Article twenty-six, 'cause they're, all of, all the land that they buy up and take out of tax rolls and, you know, whatever, it's less money the town's gonna have.
Okay, so we're gonna do the same thing then, could I get a motion, you actually have made a motion, can you amend your motion to have the board support the slate of warrant articles with the exception of three and twenty-six?
Well, there's two for the ag, right?
No, he doesn't have an issue with the first one, right? Setting, making the, making the fund you're okay with, you just don't wanna fund it?
I just don't wanna fund it.
Right, okay, so three
I don't wanna create it either.
So it's only two?
I really don't even wanna create it, this overlaps Conservation Commission, that, this, that
Okay.
Article overlaps it.
Okay, so we're gonna pull three, we're gonna pull three, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Yep.
So I amended the motion with the exception of Article three, twenty-five, twenty-six
Great.
to accept the favorable recommendation as a slate.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna move, I'll move it backwards, could I have a motion to support the two agricultural commission articles?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just on, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just on the logistics side, both would need to pass by a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Right.
Even to put the money into it.
Creation of the fund and putting together the money.
Yeah, that's just the procedural side of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Same motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, and one opposed, so four to one, and then we'll do Article three
So you didn't let me say why I didn't disagree.
No, I apologize, you absolutely can.
This Article twenty-five overlaps conservation.
Yeah.
Seriously, heavy, heavy. And twenty, and I don't know where you guys live, I mean, I live the real world. Every piece of land
I thought you knew where I live.
Every piece of land that the town buys and takes out of tax roll is less money than the town has the town has to work with. So, you're gonna go, so they're gonna come to me someday and say, I'm gonna buy your farm. I'll give you X number of dollars, which, you know, that twelve thousand I pay right now for taxes is gone. Poof. No more. It belongs to the town. Oh, yeah, we're gonna rent the land to somebody to use, what, a dollar an acre? To farm it for hay? No. I mean, let's be real. You can't, we gotta stop. Not that we don't, we don't need open space. We gotta give these people that have the land some sort of break to hold the land open and not build on it, not give it up and give it away. But, hey, this is just me. I'm old-fashioned and I'm, hey, I'm just sorry that I can't see, see us doing it, doing this, but that's, you know that.
This is a good segue, this is a good segue into my speech later about you, Skip. But anyway, is it fair to say, is it fair to say that you've, in your time on the board, have never been in favor of the town owning land that is techni, that could be otherwise taxable? Is that a fair statement?
No.
No?
We worked hard with these people down here, just down the road, where they knocked the barn down, the house down, burned it all up, and nobody would work together on it. So we lost it. We dragged our feet, dragged our feet, dragged our feet. So, don't tell me I don't want to see the town own land. I don't want them to own it. I want them to keep it open, but I don't want to see them own it.
So you want conservation restriction purchases?
Something like that's fine.
Okay.
But, because the conservation restrictions, you're still paying full tax dollar for it.
Okay. So was that, should I rephrase that? You don't believe in town ownership of lands, but having town restrictions on lands, like preservation, conservation restrictions?
Yeah, that's something like that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
But it's not...
Why a line corridor?
Hmm?
Why a line corridor?
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. And so I think now, and the reason we were getting to this was, people sometimes ask if the vote was unanimous, and if not, if there's a comment from the dissenters. And, you know, that, that's a perfectly good comment. It's one that Skip is able to make as a Select Board member at the meeting, not...
As a Select Board member, yeah.
Exactly. Not, well, but you...
I'm not talking about the farming, because I wouldn't APR my land, or anything. I do, I am under sixty-one A, but as far as APRing it and getting it, no. That's ridiculous. You can't, can't build a building on your own property? Give me a break. Without going through this bunch of crap to get, be able to build anything on your property if it's API. It's ridiculous. But, yeah, they've got a handful of money, and oh, whoopee, we're golden until it disappears.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're on to Article Three on the annual town meeting warrant. That's the managed growth bylaw, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend favorably Article Three development rate limitation bylaw.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. You better believe it. You're gonna put this by, this, this in effect, what happens to us people, or the people, anybody that's got land, it's gonna indicate the value of their land, and it's gonna drop the bottom, it's gonna drop right out of it. And don't say me, tell me no.
Why do you believe that?
Why do I believe that? You're gonna build twenty, thirty houses a year. No builder's gonna come to me or to anybody that's got a large tract of land and offer them fair money for it if they can't build it out.
Skip, there are developers that have held on to properties for years.
The developers, yeah. I'm talking about me or any other individual that's got a piece of land.
Right. The developers have purchased those parcels of land and held them for years. Their value has not changed.
That's the developer. I'm talking about right now, if I went to Cleve Blair or anybody and said, hey, I want to sell my farm, you know what they're gonna offer me for if this bylaw goes through? They'll be lucky to offer me four hundred thousand dollars.
We don't know that.
I do know that. Come on, Wayne. You gotta be realistic. But you take a vote on it. I oppose this anyway. You can take a vote, three, three against one. I don't care. I ju, people just don't understand. You gotta have provisions for the people that have the land if you don't want, you know, want the people to give it up and throw it away. I don't know. I just don't get it. I just don't get it.
Okay. Your land value as it sits, no one's discussing it. It will continue to have the same potential it had yesterday.
No, it won't.
It won't.
Not if this passes.
We have four hundred houses approved as part of various subdivisions, correct? They've been approved for quite some time in some cases, and there's more land in the pipeline that nobody's done anything with yet. And in some cases, it's been held on to for years and purchased.
Yeah, maybe held on for years, yes.
By a developer.
But there's no, that was before they put restrictions on everything. When you're putting a restriction on thirty-five houses or whatever it is per year, give me a break. No way.
But then why didn't they build them all?
They didn't, nobody, they had no buyers.
They had no buyers.
Yeah. They couldn't have had enough buyers. Otherwise, they would have done it.
Okay.
But I don't know. Maybe I'm all wet. I just don't get it. I just don't understand why anybody that you don't want housing, you don't want, yeah, I just...
So I, again, you and I were about to end our twelfth year.
Yeah.
We never, never had a budget like Lou Cornackioli did, where we could sit, look at the numbers, look at the requests, and say, you know what?
We never wasted money like they did.
And say, you know what, we can do that for you. We have been operating at top, top levy capacity this entire time we've been doing this. Something is very wrong with the town's finances. A healthy town doesn't operate the way we've been operating. And you know, we've only seen in the past three, four years, Margaret came on, we started to see ourselves get out of debt a little bit.
Yeah, well, where, where are we going with this?
Where I'm going is, how, as you and I have sat here every year and built these budgets and knew why we were in the financial situation we were in, I'm just surprised to hear you say it, because we have the reasons right in front of us.
Yeah, well, I just, you never own a piece of land, a chunk of land, and have, in the back of your mind, have to sell it someday because to pay, to survive, let's put it that. You have never had that in the back of your mind. But, like I said, take your vote. I just disagree, and that's the way it's gonna go down on that piece of paper.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
This is Article Three favorably.
Article Three favorable.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Me.
Four to one. Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the warrant, about the motions as presented?
Nope.
Okay. So again, we will be presenting the motions for the special, and on the annual, it changes. They're noted when the Finance Committee will be presenting any of the motions regarding the budget. Article Three will be presented, it's not noted yet, but it'll be presented by the Planning Board, I believe.
Yeah.
And then Article, the other articles for planning will also be presented by Planning Board for the zoning change, et cetera.
And ag presents ag, right?
You know what, they can. Actually, it's their choice. Did Agricultural Commission want to present their own? They requested them.
They can?
And we placed them.
We'll reach out to them and ask if they'd like to.
Yeah, we can go either way with that.
I thought somewhere I saw that it was, but then I didn't see it tonight, so...
Things move.
Yeah, I know. And I was like, maybe I made it up also.
All right, thank you. All right, green communities.
We, obviously, as you all know, were awarded green community status. There was a ceremony two weeks ago or last week, at some point in time in the past, two weeks ago, where the Lieutenant Governor and Secretary Beaton came out to present the official awards for green community status. And as people here leave the Selectmen's meeting room, you'll see the large check that says that we were awarded a grant amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, as well as our official certificate. And then, right around the corner, you'll see this, and these will be put on the town's Facebook as well for people to see. New street signs that say, welcome to a green community designation year, and things of that nature, that will eventually be going out, once Joe and I can figure out where to put them and how to get them up. But we have four of those to put up, and it was a good time. I wasn't able to make it due to my class schedule, but Sheila was able to go on behalf of the town. And I heard nothing but good things after from the people, both at Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Lieutenant Governor's office, so.
Yeah, I think we were a bit of a feather in the cap of the state. If you look at the map of green communities, there's a big wide patch in central Massachusetts, and all of a sudden, there's us. We're dark green because we're new this year. It was pretty nice. And the giant check is here somewhere.
It's right on...
It's outside, yeah.
It's through the chair. I thought it had my name on it.
I, I'll say this just as a note, in case anyone went to or heard the town warrant, town meeting warrant forum last week. I was talking about this article, or talking about this at one point when someone brought up our energy efficiency programs with the town. And I said, oh, I've got the check in my car, but I think it's a hundred forty-four thousand dollars. And someone came up to me after and said, what, you just announced on TV that you have a check for a hundred forty-four thousand dollars in your car? I was like, well, it's, it's not a real check. It's a big ceremonial check to take a picture with. So just so no one thinks it's in the actual place.
All right. Thank you very much. Definitely looking forward to having, where I get back on, working on that.
I know the first, one of the first projects they'll, they'll be doing is in putting LED lights in the town-owned building, town-owned buildings. So, it'll coincide, we'll have LED streetlights and LED lights inside, too, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
I thought we did that already, to be honest with you.
The fire department did, because they did an audit. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what these lights are, but they show what the sand looked like.
These are fluorescents, I think.
I don't know. I guess they'll know when they come and check. Under managed growth bylaw update, I think we kind of reviewed it based on people's questions during public comments. So we've had votes by the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen now tonight, Select Board. It will be presented on town meeting floor. It is Article Three. And off we go. Under correspondence, is there anything else?
Yep. I mean, just correspondence.
Yeah. So under correspondence, we had a letter from the Agricultural Commission. I know we had kind of tossed this around a little bit, the discussion about the changes to the roles and powers relative to some MGL updates back in 2016. And they enclosed a copy of the law for us with a cover letter explanation. If anybody wants a copy of that, that's available to anyone.
It should be in all of your packets.
Yep. Did anybody have any questions? Did you have time to review it?
I, what are they asking of us?
They're not asking anything. It was really more of a notification, just to make sure we were all on the same page relative to being aware of what the new MGL said.
The 2016 law that was passed now allows agricultural commissions to own and manage farmland, hold conservation restrictions, obtain state grants, hold an agricultural preservation fund, and create a town agricultural land plan. So those are all things now that have been added to the duties and powers of agricultural commissions statewide, and ours is included in that because of when it was created.
Just to, just for the record, the, the letter that they sent requested notification that this would be included as correspondence at our next meeting. I believe you had a discussion with a member of the ag com. So they knew we were addressing this tonight. I think, Mike, you didn't anticipate a lot of questions, so I think there was an offer to attend, but...
Could we maybe just send a note back acknowledging it and thanking them?
Absolutely.
And keep the communication open. Thank you for...
The last, we had a letter from the Secretary of State's Office Historical Division this April. There was an inquiry, and apparently, it was an inquiry with some history to it regarding the Wood House, which is the house on Main Street, where the Historical Society is now, has its, has its home, and including that building on the National Register of Historic Places. It was a very preliminary inquiry. There's a lot for them to do if they're going to pursue it. This letter kind of outlined that. But the letter, once you get a chance to read it, and again, I know if anybody here would like it, we have copies, did seem to offer some hope for that because of the visibility of the artist, which was pretty interesting.
I spoke to Mr. Banks the other day on this. See him quite regularly. And, I mean, the building itself is in, starting to show some wear and tear. There's a leak, there's a leak in the roof in there. And their hopes was to get, if you get this on the National Registry, it would preserve it, you know, so it doesn't turn into a parking lot, and maybe at some point, it might help with some of the necessary repairs to keep it up.
So hopefully, they'll keep this...
That building is in really tough shape. Really tough.
Yep. The last thing that would be needed before anything would happen is after all the initial applications are done by the applicant, by the applicant, be it whoever, Mr. Banks, the Historical Society as a whole or not, would be the Board of Selectmen would need to vote to allow them to submit the application.
Excellent.
Any motion on that?
No, not...
Not yet. Not until they have an application ready.
Got it. Are there any other matters to come before the board? Right?
We have one.
We have one.
Motion adjourned.
No, thank you. Denied.
No second.
So tonight is Liboray, Skip Clark's last meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have one more prior to annual town meeting, but it's his last meeting with us here tonight after twelve years. We were elected together in 2007, and he got the three-year seat. And he's been here with us ever since. And Skip and I don't always agree.
Hardly ever.
Hardly ever.
I agree with that.
And yet, somehow, we're able to talk in the hallway and have remained civil and friendly and, end of an era. It's gonna be very different not having you here on the board in a week. Very, very different. Been through a lot. Multiple department head changes, hiring of our first town administrator, and now our second. The town has, you know, Louis kind of commented on the changes in his nine years. And in these twelve, the town has professionalized to a point that we had never been able to reach before, and just a lot of good things happening. So we want to thank him for his twelve years. Round of applause for Skip Clark.
Good job. I'd do it again, too. I'd probably argue with Sheila more.
Probably. This is your present for the board.
No, thank you.
Thank you. That's right. And we have cake for everyone, because celebration without cake, and as a matter of fact, one of the cakes is made with Skip's own eggs, because Skip has the best, some of the best eggs in town.
Yeah, he does.
When is the party at your farm? Did we miss it?
The one-hundredth?
No, it's July twentieth.
July twentieth. Yeah, you have a lot going on.
Invite all of you.
Invite all of you. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn for cake.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.